Perfect. Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome. It's so nice to see everyone. Hopefully, everyone has found a place to sit. I want to welcome you to our August 21st, 2024 regular meeting of council. I'll call the meeting to order at 9:00 a.m. And I'll ask everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem.
You can help along. Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of our skies. What is for the team? The king is on his throne. One, two, three. Oh, send you. No, can't we stand on top? Canada, this land belongs. This land belongs.
Are there any additions to the agenda this morning?
Not from administration. Madam Mayor.
Council? Is there a member of council that would like to adopt the August 21st regular meeting of council minutes? Counselor Kamana, thank you. All in favor? That is carried. Any corrections or amendments to the August 7th, 2024 regular meeting of council minutes? Can I get a member of council to make a motion to accept those? Thank you very much. Counselor McGee, all in favor? That is carried. We have no proclamations, no public hearings, but we have an amazing delegation this morning. Ms. Linda Erickson, thank you very much. And thank you, everyone, for coming. Again, it's so nice to see everyone. Thank you for coming and exciting and celebrating and honoring such a remarkable individual who has dedicated so many years of service to our community and an avocating commitment and such excellence. Linda Erickson, today, we want to recognize you for your extraordinary service at the RCMP detachment as service assistant for the last 25 years and for the two years that you spent at the town of Drayton Valley in the planning department. Your dedication, your expertise, and your kind heart have made a lasting impression on everyone at the detachment and everyone at the town. You are truly an expert at just about everything when it came to admin work and information manager extraordinaire, as one of your colleagues have so fondly put it. Your work kept the members in the know, especially with your meticulous efforts to keep database accurate and so up to date. I've heard you even had to get a little feisty now and then to ensure that things got done, but you always did it with love. You've also been the go-to person for running reports, teaching your colleagues, and simply making the workplace better for everyone. Your commitment to going above and beyond, your sharp wit, and your genuine care for those around you have made it an irreplaceable part on everybody's heart and part of the team. It's clear that you take immense pride in your work and that you've touched the lives of so many over the 25 years that you have given. As you step into this next chapter of your life, we know that your heart will be full, spending more time with your parents in Beaumont and family and indulging in your favorite pastime of grayscale coloring. You will be greatly missed, and I'm sure that the detachment won't quite be the same without you. On behalf of the town of Drayton Valley, thank you for so much service that you have given, for the commitment, for the dedication, and everything that you've given, not only to the detachment, but to the community and the town of Drayton Valley. So, thank you so much, Linda. And we would love to get a little picture with you if you would like to come up with council and then for the RCMP to come up, too. That'd be fantastic.
This will be on Facebook. The other boys, you know.
How many pieces? How's it going to spread out?
You're all, it sounds you. There you go.
She's gonna have to sleep in a little bit tomorrow. Enjoy your retirement and everything.
All right.
Oh, really?
Oh, look at that. Another picture. Come on. Tom, take another picture. All right. Well, you love it. This is going.
That's so nice. Wow. Child fun.
There. What's under looking?
That's great. Did you buy anything?
Yeah. Ready? Yeah. Excited.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Yeah, now we get to the really exciting stuff. So, for those of you that want to stay, enjoy the rest of your day. Thanks. Bye. Yeah, did you? Yeah, did you think? Thank you so much. Enjoy the rest of your day. Congratulations. So, did you think they all came for the MDP, Peter? Oh. Thought maybe that was your first impression, right? Is that, wow, this is a great turnout. Oh, well, that's fantastic. I don't know. Well, that was a happy turnout. And Linda did work here at the town office for two years, I found out this morning, in the planning department. So, that's kind of cool. Yeah, so that would have been before the RCMP? Yeah? Okay, wow. Oh, wow. Yeah, nice. So, you've worked the whole time then, Tom, with her? Oh, that's really nice. Yeah. Well, she stayed for quite a few years. There's a lot of politics in politics, for sure. Well, now, it's a little quieter back there. But thank you for sticking around. So, we have no business arising from our delegation, but again, just to say thank you to Linda and the years of service that she has given us. It's always sad to see somebody that's given so much to the community go, but it's also so happy to also see them move on to that next chapter of their life. So, we wish her the best. So, we'll jump right into our decision items. And first up is 9.1, which is our municipal development plan. This is our first reading for bylaw 2024-02D. And we have Mr. Peter Vanna here this morning presenting to us. Good morning.
Morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's my pleasure today to present to you the municipal development plan for first reading. It's been a little bit of a process. We started this back in September of 2023 and have gone through the process of having interviews, having open houses, having online surveys and so forth. And I've also met with county officials to go through any items that they have brought up as part of the plan. And so, we're now ready and at the point where we'd like to give bylaw first reading. The recommendation today is that council give municipal development plan 2024-02D first reading as defined in the report, AR 24194. And then, from this point on, what will happen is that the bylaw will be advertised. And probably a month from now, we'll come back for a public hearing and readings to deal with the bylaw. Those are my remarks. Madam Mayor?
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. So, hopefully, everyone had an opportunity to look at these or this fabulous document that Mr. Vanna and his team had put together for us. Thank you very much for that. So, how do you want this to work today? Do you want us to go through the MDP if we have some areas of concern or policy questions or, you know, suggested changes? Are you suggesting that we pass first reading and then come back with those lists? Or are you kind of going to keep track of those? How would we like to go?
Usually, what we would do is give first reading to the biologists to get it on to the books.
Yeah.
And then, as part of the public hearing process, we would identify any items that need to be addressed as part of that. And certainly, if council has any items that they want to bring forward today that should be aware of, then certainly happy to listen to those.
Okay. And then, the public hearing, you said, will be scheduled for about a month from now or a month ahead?
It'll be in October.
It'll be in October, and it'll be here in the chambers. So, then, that will be open to the public as well and to council. I did have some other little notes here, and I don't know where they went. Okay, so, any questions for Mr. Vanna this morning? Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vanna. Very detailed document. It looks beautiful. Thank you for bringing this to us. Just wondering, we went through the first few pages of the document. I'm sure there's lots of discussion needed, but I was just wondering about the identity part and how we selected those areas of identity. And is there opportunity for us to fine-tune it or add more items along the line of what I'm thinking is about the diversity and inclusivity? I don't see that as an identity here. Thank you.
Maybe you could just point to the or identify the page that?
Page two.
Page two? Right, so those, that came from the town's documents that are already in place. So, it wasn't as though we reinvented anything. And so, that's where we identified that from.
Okay. I think part of the strategic plan for Drayton Valley, we've identified those as priorities as well. So, just throwing it out there, this is the first reading and just to see how, if we can incorporate it or how we can incorporate it as well.
Generally speaking, I mean, the strategic plan is a standalone document with council. It's council's document that you update on a regular basis, the municipal development plan. You know, we've identified it in order to provide that link to that document. But certainly, the MDP in itself is usually where we deal with the policies that are in behind it. And those are the important parts that the council needs to look at to say, yes, we agree with these policies or not. I just want to, you know, just refresh council that as part of this process, what we did was we took the existing municipal development plan, and we have updated the policies that are in that, in our existing municipal development plan to update them to where we are today in terms of council's direction. So, that's, that in essence is, we didn't sort of, sort of reinvent this idea from scratch. We have identified policies that are already in the MDP and have updated those and also gone through from a legislative perspective to make sure that it meets the legislative requirements that are in the Municipal Development Act.
So, then, how the plans kind of work, Counselor Kamana, is there's a hierarchy of plans, as Mr. Vanna had stated, under the Municipal Government Act. So, the municipal development plan is a statutory plan. So, that plan falls under your IDP or your ICFs and things like that, and there's an order. So, something like your, maybe your sustainability plan or your strategic plan or community are documents that support a plan like this. So, this kind of is the overarching plan for all of that. So, when you talk about diversity, that's not where, this isn't the type of plan you would see it. This is the future of the lands and development over the next 30 years. And then, it will make reference in here, like to see now those types of plans. You'd reference now your statutory, your sustainability, and that's where kind of all the other pieces fit together with statutory plans. So, I understand what you're saying, but typically, in a document like this, you wouldn't see it here?
Yeah, no, that's what I wanted to understand as well, right? You know, when I read the, our identity here, it's very broad as well, you know? As you're mentioning, it's not as fine-tuned as for MDP itself. Like, I think this is just the introduction piece. That's probably why.
Yeah, and it's more directed at development and future growth and lands and things like that. So, that's where you're not seeing that. So, all those other plans support this document.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I understand that. I'm just putting it out there, saying, you know, if there's an opportunity for us to incorporate that or not. But it's, again, first reading, and we are going to the, I guess, consultation piece after this, and that's a discussion to have.
Just to be clear, Madam Mayor, just to be clear, I mean, the process from here is that it would be advertised and open to the public to come and provide delegations to council to express any concerns or input that they have at the public hearing.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Counselor Evans, did you have a comment or question?
Yeah, just to mention on page 11, Counselor Kamana, there is some mention of welcoming newcomers and celebrating the rich heritage, the many First Nations, many Inuit, and the multicultural community it has become today. So, I'm just mentioning, there is acknowledgement of that further in the document a little bit there.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Evans. I've seen that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor McGee?
To point, do you see us then coming together as a council to dig through this document before we go into second and third reading? Or do we just read it on our own and then come back with questions? How do you see us actually doing this? And because oftentimes, these documents are there, but, you know, never referred to. And as you know, getting out to the public, the public is really excited about this. And so, if you get one person, that's the excitement you're getting, right? So, just to know how it fits, I get it. But how do we? How do we make it?
Do we get our input, I guess?
Real, right? In the sense of important and just not another document? I don't know when we're going to do that.
So, part of the implementation, and so, in this plan, there is an implementation section. It starts on page 60. And really, it identifies, so how are we going to actually implement this plan? Because, I mean, unless you implement it, it's just going to sit on a shelf and collect dust like the last one did or what the current one did. So, what we've identified are things that have to be done as part of the day-to-day administration and as part of what council deals with in order to make this a living document, in order to make sure that it gets updated. So, that's in terms of reviewing the policies on an annual basis. It's about reviewing the overall plan on a frequent basis, looking at the area structure plans, because those area structure plans need to be updated, where they may conflict or where they are no longer required, et cetera. As well, the other aspect of, you know, the MDP is also the fact that it needs to work into your day-to-day life, right? So, part of that is the budget. So, council goes through a budget process every year. It's important to kind of look at this and kind of say, okay, are there capital improvements that need to happen? Or, you know, how's our infrastructure doing? In some respects, you are doing this already, but we're tying it to the MDP as well so that, you know, you'll look at where growth is happening. You'll look at where major infrastructure needs to happen that's sort of identified in this plan, and you work it into your work program, and you bring it to council as part of your budget process every year. Council reviews it and says, yeah, we're going to do it or we're, you know, going to push it off or what are we going to do with it? But at least it's identified, and you're bringing it forward, and you can link it to your plan.
I could just add to that, Mr. Vanna. Thank you. Yeah, and at the back of the document, there's recommendations. So, you'll see some of those recommendations come forward in the next few years of budget discussions. Like, there's updating of a number of master plans that are in there, the development of a couple of master plans that perhaps we don't have as a town that we truly need. So, you'll see those in there. As far as next steps, I think Peter's done a very good job explaining that. But Counselor McGee, to answer your question directly, that usually how it goes is you take that document and you read it. And if you have any feedback or questions, you can simply email it to Peter and myself, and we'll endeavor to answer them or incorporate it in the document. I believe you were thinking about some type of workshop to have to go through it as a team?
I just don't want it to be one of those documents. We have so many. That's the only there. They're only there to make sure that we follow the MGA and the Act, but really, they have, they don't seem to have a whole lot of value because we're, you know, this kind of politics in, you know, our reactionary, next thing, next thing, next thing, right? And you don't really take time to get into these documents. And I think this time, we may want to take an hour just to say, okay, make sure you've read it to bring your information to the table, much like Counselor Kamana has opened up already with one. And let's make sure that we have a good, broad discussion on why this document is important, where it should go, and when it should be referred to. That warm you up?
Counselor Kamana? Counselor Kamana?
Sorry. I was just watching. Well, yeah, sorry. Yeah, just to, I guess, move that conversation forward. Like we're discussing, this is a future-looking document, right? We are looking at next five, 10, 15, 25 years. So, how do we kind of project that the growth of Drayton Valley? And how much do we need to grow? For example, about the transportation. You know, we are looking at the current situation, transportation and roads, but we haven't looked at if there would be a need for public transport at a later date in 20 years or in 15 years from now. And how do we address something like that here? Is it just entering that as a line item and then having another document doing down the road? Or how do we kind of handle that kind of a thing? And same thing with housing as well, right? You know, we are, we're trying to grow our community, and when we are growing, you know, which parts have we identified as for housing? And what kind of housing? And is, are we going to put a line item here and then discuss it in a different document down the road, right? So, I'm just trying to understand as well.
Right, so I wish I had my little graphic with me. But generally speaking, as was explained, you know, you've got the municipal development plan up here, and then cascading down from that, you get more detailed plans. So, if we're talking about a housing plan, if we're talking about a transportation plan, if we're talking about our utility servicing strategy and how we're doing that, you know, it all falls in under that. Generally speaking, what happens is that, and this process has been a little bit different than what normally would happen. So, typically, you do all these background studies, and then that would feed back up into the municipal development plan, which is the broad brush, which is the general direction that you want to go, right? These detailed plans provide much more detail and much more terms of action, terms of here's how we're going to do it. Here's, this is sort of what we want to do, but it doesn't necessarily always explain how we're going to do it, right? So, that's where the detailed plans come in. And how it circles back into council, it becomes part of council's priorities in your priority list. It also becomes part of the budget process, right? And so, that's what that flow chart that I have would show you. And that's how it sort of fits into that. So, just to kind of say that, oh, I don't see a lot of detail on housing and how we're going to deal with housing as an example. The job of the MDP is to identify something, the fact that, yeah, we need to be able to create growth, and we need to be able to facilitate it. And where are we going to facilitate it? We need to have an idea of what happens if we grow, what happens if we don't grow. And that's what this plan does. It identifies, you know, what happens under a growth scenario, what happens if we do nothing, and what happens if we have modest growth. So, and then it identifies how much land you would need and how much servicing you would need, et cetera. So, from that perspective, you know, the MDP covers in broad perspectives, but the detail is in those studies.
Perfect, yeah. Yeah. If you're not in the planning world, then it's a little bit hard to understand the whole hierarchy of all the plans and where everything fits, everything. And think of this as it's divided in sections, like little sections. So, you have like a land-based section, and it'll have like goals and objectives for the land base, and then it's driven by policy. So, this is a very much policy document for all those little areas like intermunicipal cooperation, land use, transportation, utilities, things like that.
Madam Mayor, I was just going to say, I mean, it's helpful, and I've done this in other municipalities where we actually pull together, here's an implementation, here's an actual implementation strategy of, and council gets to look at that a little more detail. It kind of takes the things in here like it's, you know, we're going to update our master plan. Okay, it identifies that, tries to put it on to a timeline. And you can take that as part of your budget process forward so that it works in with your budget process in terms of council identifies priorities and what you want to do. Then you need to figure out how you're going to fund it and when you're going to do it, right? So, we can do that as well. That becomes part of that broader conversation with council.
Thank you for that. Yeah. So, I'm not too sure of like next steps. I know we talked about public hearing and things like that. So, if you have questions or policy changes or things like that, then we'd want to have them prior to or during the public hearing. So, then those adjustments can be made. As Mr. Vanna had said, then, today, you know, is doing first reading and then making those amendments and changes throughout the document, for sure. I think the document looks fantastic. I know Counselor McGee talks about, you know, this is a document that gets put on a shelf. I think that's why what planners do now is they try to make it pretty and attractive so that it would sit on a coffee table or maybe be left out rather than just words in the back of a shelf. So, you know, they've incorporated word walls and things like that so people maybe want to read it a little. So, you know, they've incorporated word walls and, and, and things like that, so people maybe want to read it a little bit more and are a little bit more interested of, of kind of where the community goes and things like that. So whether they read it or not, I don't know. I think only a select few people get really excited about MDPs. I don't know. But yeah, fantastic job. I love how you incorporated the pulling together in, because that kind of is the town's motto and envision statement and things like that. I feel it has simple language in the plan that is understandable. There's not a lot of acronyms and big words and things like that, so I think that's great with that. I did have some policy questions kind of going through, so I don't know if you want me kind of just to tell you now or to email or to do a working or wait or what you're kind of thinking.
Certainly, if, if, if the mayor wants to bring those up, then that's, that's great.
Okay, so just a couple that I noticed, just going forward, is when we looked at, or when we jump into, I think it is, the first one, which is our land base. I just have a question around, right after land base, we jump into development constraints. And I wonder if, my first impression when I read the document was that if development constraints couldn't be pushed a little bit, as not, as rather than three point four, maybe it was three point seven or something like that. I just felt the impression that, are we wanting to work with developers and work together? And then I was just wondering, too, is under the constraint policies, just something, you know, just simple to say, you know, foster relationships or collaborative relationships with developers to ensure that they're, you know, just something like that? What are your kind of thoughts on that? I know, because we always say, we want to be open for business, and we understand that there's constraints when it comes to that development and things like that, but we want to ensure that we're working with you. We want to ensure that we are increasing that growth and, and future development, too. So what would you think about that?
The development constraints section, and like the reason it's, it's where it is, is it's just simply outlining, you sort of need to understand where you can build and where you can't build. And as, it's a matter of, it's a matter of fact, I guess, you know, you can't build on top of a pipeline, you can't, you can't build within certain meters of a, of a landfill or a, or a sewage treatment plant. So I, you know, those kind of, those are basically the, the constraints that we have, right? And that's sort of where we, that becomes the base of understanding, right? And that, that's why it's, it's located in the section where it is, right up front. From there, we do have language in, in throughout the document that, you know, where we are encouraging and, and, you know, collaborating with other parties or, you know, partnerships or developers and so forth. And so I, I think that's, that's where you find it later on in the document, where you're actually, how do you move forward from that?
I wonder if we couldn't just have more of a, a goal or objective, just something that kind of kicked it off when we, before the policy or something like that? I just, that was my first impression, right, is that it, like, maybe it just started with constraints, and I understand the whole constraints, but it just, I think in trying to get the, some of the developers to build right now, they are feeling that they're dealing with some constraints that's deferring them from maybe going forward with building or, or just kind of putting things on hold. So that's where I was like, is there a bit of a softer language or is there a bit of a goal, just something that maybe just says collaboration or to foster relationships or something, right? In there, that would be a suggestion there. And then when we went, or when we moved to intermunicipal or inter, yeah, intermunicipal planning, again, for a policy is to have that, a policy under that the town will. Maybe something like foster and maintain working relationships with our surrounding municipal partners to ensure that we're dealing with intermunicipal issues and constraints or something like that. Just to have something in there that we're going to maintain the relationships and, because I didn't see that there as a policy. That was page forty-two?
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think that those are extremely valid points, and whether or not we can incorporate them into, into the development constraints, because as Mr. Vanna indicated, those are more like physical constraints. And I think what you're talking about is a culture, is a culture of enticing development and working with development. Having pre-development meetings, if somebody has an idea, sit down with them, go through it, make sure they're aware of the physical constraints that we have. But I'm sure Peter can have a look in, in, in the document and, and kind of work that in, but the, the constraints are more kind of physical, not, not a cultural.
Yeah, and that's why I said if you can't, if we can't incorporate it in a policy, then maybe even just as a, as a goal or an objective just prior to that, even just a goal statement or objective or something prior to the policies in there, just for that. And then for the intermunicipal planning, though, to actually have a policy, right, to saying that, that we will foster those and maintain those working relationships, I think are important when it comes to intermunicipal government. And those were kind of just the only two that, at this time, that I had, like, around the policies. Again, I think the document looks fantastic. Another suggestion would be, I love that we used our own stock, our own photos rather than stock photos, so it's close to the community. I would just wonder if we couldn't change some of them out. I didn't see a lot of oil and gas. That was the only thing. I seen a lot of rodeo. And my reading was, I, you know, I, we don't, we're not a big agriculture community, right? So I would just wonder where predominantly oil and gas, right, if we could just switch a couple of them out for, and the wood, forestry as well, right? Rather than so many horses and rodeos, if we could just have a few pump jacks and lumber logs. Lumber logs. And that's kind of it. Yeah, I'll save the rest for when we have the public hearing. Does anyone else have any other comments or questions?
I'll just add, Madam Mayor, instead of waiting for the public hearing, if you have other things, then, you know, before the public hearing, and you want to jot a note down and send it into Mr. Vanna, I think that's, that would be very beneficial.
Yeah, as you kind of go through the document, and you take it home and you read it, and you take it to bed with you, and you study it and learn all about it, Tom, you'll want to jot down a few more little policy changes that, that you can think of off the top of your head. Well, thank you again for this wonderful document. It's nice to have this update come forward to council for our first reading, reading. And with that being said, is there a member of council that would like to make a motion for the first reading of our wonderful municipal development plan this morning? Counselor Evans?
I'll make the motion that council give Municipal Development Plan Bylaw 2024 slash O2 slash D, first reading as defined in Report AIR 24 dash one nine four.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? And I'll ask all in favor. And that is carried. Thank you again for this. So moving along is, next up, we have nine point two Economic Developers Alberta Community Economic Resiliency Workshop. Mr. Kundi Nambeiri. That was a long report title there. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, council. Economic Developers Alberta is a not-for-profit association that supports economic development activities in Alberta for the advancement of economic development profession by providing an active network of professional development, information, and networking opportunities. In partnership with our Community Futures Capital Region, ADA is offering an award-winning course on community economic resiliency that explores various types of disasters and the implementation of strategies to enable a community to withstand and recover from economic disruptions and challenges. Given the challenges of 2023 with the impact of the evacuation and wildfires, and not to mention the most recent event in Jasper, Community Futures Capital Region through ADA have an opportunity to bring this specific workshop into the region, and we're interested in Grayton Valley being among one of the first destinations for this workshop. So regarding the workshop details, they are planning a one-day workshop and are looking to fill twenty spaces with an additional ten spaces for project partners. The fee for, for participants to attend will be covered by the project. And their ask to the town is if we would be willing to partner by cross-promoting their workshop and by sponsoring the food and space for them. So given this request and ask from them, the financial implications for sponsoring the food and the space, we sort of estimated would be around nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, five hundred for the food and about four twenty-five for the space itself. And putting that aside, I did also attach a promo that they sent just for what the workshop is all about. And in talking to the Community Futures Capital Region, it's a, it's a first of many series that they're trying to do within Alberta. And so, and it all mostly depends on just how much uptake they get, how much demand there is for such a workshop. And, and yeah, and so it's due to begin October first, 2024. And so Grayton Valley is just one of those locations that they were looking to have this in. And so with that said, their recommendation is our council support Economic Developers Alberta Workshop on Community Economic Resiliency. And as defined in Report AIR two four one nine seven. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions? There's no questions. Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Counselor Commander?
I would like to make a motion that council support Economic Developments Alberta Workshop on Community Economic Resiliency as defined in Report AIR 24 one nine seven. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Comment, question, debate on the motion? So is council invited to attend this workshop?
Through to your worship, yes. So as part of this workshop, it is for elected officials as well, if they'd want to attend.
Okay, can you send out a calendar invite for that, Nancy? Okay, there's a motion on the table, all in favor. That is carried. I guess I should have said send out a calendar invite after we voted. I was anticipating. Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Next up is nine point three E Venture Letter of Support.
E Venture Northwest Alberta is a regional electric vehicle charging network strategy for the central and northwest region of the province. The concept was conceived in March 2020 and is supported by a collaborative partnership of the city of Grand Prairie, municipal district of Greenview, the town of White Court, town of Intan, town of Edson, town of Grayton Valley, and town of Rocky Mountain House. This community-driven strategy to create a network of public EV charging stations was initiated by the partners, having identified their region as a gap of EV charging and as a result, missing opportunities associated with the merging, emerging tourism sector of electric vehicle drivers. This network is an economic development opportunity with strategic design to connect with existing EV charging networks in southern Alberta. And for southern Alberta, they had that own initiative called the Peaks to Prairies and the forthcoming network along Highway sixteen in North BC, Charge North. In delivering this strategy, the town of Grayton Valley and the rest of the partners have been working with the community, the Community Energy Association, a not-for-profit society that assists local communities in implementing climate-related initiatives. And since their program's inception, the town has in the past made a financial contribution. Back in 2020, as an initial seed funding, and as you may remember last year, November twenty-three, 2023, we did provide the Community Energy Association with a municipal letter of support, advocating for this strategy to the Government of Alberta. And so to date, Adco is asking that council support them with their attached letter of support to Natural Resource Canada as part of their zero emissions vehicle infrastructure program application to fund fifty percent of the project installation costs, with them covering the rest. If the application is successful, the town would then proceed to executing a license of occupation agreement, providing Adco access to the sites for the provision of EV charging stations. And so alongside the report, I did also just attach a draft letter of support and as well just a citing of what the proposed site is, with a note that the, that a site inspection was done by Adco and approved. As a great location to host an EV chargers. And so all they would require is just four stalls in the parking lot from this forty-six that I counted. And so I did try to highlight where the parking lot is. And so with that said, it is a recommendation that our council endorse Adco's letter of support to Natural Resource Canada as part of their zero emissions vehicle infrastructure program application as defined in Report AIR two four one nine six. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any questions for administration? Counselor McGee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kundi, the, there's a lot of interesting things happening around the world in EV and timing, type of plugins, those kinds of things. So it's changing rapidly. Adco must have their finger on the pulse, I'm guessing, and so that will be when we decide to install. And then we're to fund fifty percent of the project installation costs. Do we have any idea what that might be? And the second thing is that we're hearing now that, of course, the price of copper, they're all being torn out to by folks that sell copper. So it's a, it's a bit of a, bit of an issue right now, and I'm not sure what to do about it, but I'm, I'm in favor of going forward, but a lot of issues right now.
Through to your worship to Counselor McGee. So yes, Adco actually was the partner that, that did the Peaks to Prairies. So the, so one of the, the Southern Alberta Peaks to Prairies initiative that strategized on connecting EV chargers, they were the ones that did that. And so with ours, they are very much on the pulse. And as of right now, the most advanced EV chargers are level three chargers. So, you know, it's just faster. And, and with the design they're looking to do is, I do believe they're also going for pull-through to allow for even larger vehicles apart from just small vehicles to utilize the chargers. And so, yeah, so from the discussions we've had with them, they do seem to be very eager. And, and since this is something they've done before, they do seem to be quite aware of what's required in moving forward and are in tune with what's mostly available, at least technology-wise. And regarding your second inquiry about the issues, so I did actually hear about that, about some copper wire has been torn out. And, and so, of course, this is something we just share with them, just let them know that this occurrence had happened, just so they are aware. And, yeah, and so the hope, of course, is that like, there might be some form of corrective action that they can do on our behalf, right? To make sure that doesn't happen with these EV chargers.
Any idea of, of what the cost might be? Did they ballpark anything?
Through to Counselor McGee. So as of right now, I have not, I'm not too sure on what the cost might be. But I do know, though, that, of course, none of that cost come on the town, since the hope is that the grant will cover fifty percent and then Adco the rest.
So there wouldn't be an obligation, cost obligation to us, then it's just the letter of support. So I want to get the clarity on, too.
Yes, and then, of course, if everything does work out for them, we would then provide that land. So we would sign the license of occupation just for the four stalls that they would need for those EV chargers.
Okay, Counselor Commander?
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Maggie's comments, but I, I believe a year, a year and a half ago, we've signed up for something similar with, was it Adco? Or, you know, again, the same idea of having a EV route from Edmonton to Calgary, I believe. Is, is this the same initiative, if you know, Kundi, or is it another separate initiative as this one?
So through to Counselor McGee, I mean, Counselor Gomana. So last year in November, I, I did come before council, asking for a lot of support for this same project. But then apart from that, Fortis Alberta did reach out at some point last year, hoping to basically do the exact same thing, right? They were looking to go through a provincial grant this time. But unfortunately, later along the application process, I think the funding was pulled, and so they couldn't proceed. But unfortunately, later along the application process, I think the funding was pulled and so they couldn't proceed. So as of right now, this is the only initiative that I'm aware of that's looking at bringing EV chargers.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Councilor Sheriffs.
I'm looking at the map and I'm sort of trying to figure out the location of this parking lot, and I can't really pinpoint the exact location. Can you kind of describe to me?
Whereabouts it is?
Where it is, yeah.
So through to Councilor Sheriffs. So um I guess if you can visualize um the street, so on Fifty-two Avenue, if you can visualize where um I guess the Malagan Registries is. Um, and so basically, it's opposite that and right behind the downtown parking lot. And so, yeah, it's really hard to visualize, but um, but basically, we own that parking lot. And um, so we can even walk. So it's about a, you know, two to three minute walk from here to the parking lot.
I may, Councilor, Councilor Sheriffs, it's it's behind where um, so where there's, I think, a little uh arena out front here. It's that parking lot, just behind that.
And the pet store.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions, is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion? Councilor Revins?
I'll make the motion that council endorse Adco's letter of support to Natural Resources Canada as part of the Zero Emissions Vehicle Infrastructure Program Application as divine as defined in Report A I R dash twenty-four dash one ninety-six.
Thank you for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? And I'll ask all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much this morning. Uh, moving along, uh, whoa, you're still here, Kundi. Uh, next up is nine point four, Rural Renewal Stream Proposed Changes.
At the regular council meeting on July ten, twenty twenty-four, council resolved that administration bring forward a report with some proposed changes to the Rural Renewal Stream Program. Um, so as you might already be aware, since we've been in this program for quite a while, uh, the Rural Renewal Stream Program is an initiative offered through Alberta Advantage Immigration that allows for eligible job seekers the opportunity to immigrate to Alberta as a provincial nominee with the formal support of the municipal government. So through this stream, the town of Drayton Valley is able to uh fill local labor force gaps by working with local businesses to endorse job seekers with the possibility that they are then nominated um through A I P to fast-track their temporary immigration status by attaining permanent residency. And uh, as you might already be aware, um, everything goes through uh immigration refugees and Citizenship Canada. And so it's it's them that have set nomination lists for all provincial nominee programs with uh A I P receiving nine thousand seven hundred and fifty nominations in twenty twenty-four for all the immigration programs. So uh, so for the Rural Renewal Stream specifically, A I P has allocated an estimated amount of one thousand nine hundred nominations uh with them having already issued one thousand two hundred and seventy-three to date. So about sixty-seven percent of those allocations have been used already. And uh, so last I checked, uh, there were over eighty participating communities that are part of this Rural Renewal Stream Program uh with approximately six hundred and twenty-seven actu- um allocations remaining in twenty twenty-four. And so the town of Drayton Valley has been a designated community under R R S since March twenty twenty-three. And uh, since then, we've received over three hundred applications and endorsed over two hundred domestic and foreign job seekers. And so with how limited allocations and nominations are through A I P, administration is proposing a strategic approach to our immigration program and have therefore proposed the following changes below. So the first change that we're proposing to the program is that we place a limit on the number of endorsements that we issue. And so we're proposing a limit of a hundred endorsements per year and a maximum of um five endorsements per employer. Uh, the second is that we only endorse job seekers that are living, that are currently living in Drayton Valley. And so with this proposal, this would have us, you know, requiring candidates to provide proof of residence, whether that be a lease agreement, driver's license, utility bill. And from there, the third proposal or third change is that employers um actively recruit either through Canada Job Bank or Indeed. And for us, it just helps the administrative process just a little with trackability. It makes it mu- much easier if we just have a select amount of um uh just um platforms that they use trying to recruit and retain people. And then uh, so the last proposed change is that we enforce a minimum amount of time that a business has been actively operating in Drayton Valley. And so with this, we are proposing a minimum of two years to be, which we should be able to verify through the issuance of our business licenses. And so this does coincide with what the province issued um about two months ago, where they themselves, you know, tried to you know, put forward a regulation that the business entity has to be operating within Alberta for at least two years. And so since then, we we have found that the loophole is that a lot of businesses then change their business entity to another business entity that's been active for more than two years and then uh just reapply, right, for the same business. And so for this, we just start, if we work with our business licensing, at least we can see when we issue that business license. And so uh, so with these proposed changes, administration believes that they would help mitigate uh the growing concern of the housing crisis, healthcare and service cap- uh capacities and it would also still allow for the community to thrive through the talents of um foreign temporary workers. And of course, this is not something uh we came too lightly. We did have discussions with the government of Alberta. Uh, so A I P, we spoke to those representatives. We look at what other communities are doing. And we're just more or less just trying to get a handle of uh just how we operate this program, just given the fact that nominations and and allocations are very limited, right? I I think within the um allocations of uh one thousand nine hundred, within the nominations one thousand nine hundred that they did designate for the R R S, if you divide that by, you know, the eighty communities that are that are participating, it's around twenty-three nominations per community if they do it equitably. And so for us, we're just thinking, you know, if we are going to, you know, go about this in such a way where only twenty-three people that apply for endorsement through Drayton Valley are they nominated, why don't we just be more strategic and just make sure that the businesses that need it the most are benefiting from it and just making sure that for those people that do come to Canada, right? Or that do immigrate even uh intra-provincially, that, you know, they are, they do have a place to stay, they have those accommodations, so that it's not one of those big issues, right, where people come, but they have nowhere to stay. And uh, it just becomes a burden for someone else, right? And so um, uh, with that said, our recommendation is that council approve for the proposed changes to the Rural Renewal Stream Program as defined in Report A I R two four one nine nine. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions? Councilor Sheriffs?
So the minimum of two-year to be verified through the insurance, uh, what is it now in Drayton Valley in R R S? Like, how how, is there a certain amount of time that the business has to be open before we go with the R R S?
So through to um, Councilor Sheriff. So right now, I guess since the province um changed the requirement about two months ago, uh, they are requiring that the business entity be at least operational within Alberta for two years. And so for us, uh, we are making it just, we're localizing it to Drayton Valley specifically, right?
I understand that. It just, um, up until now, without having this two-year requirement, have we just, like, could it be, could new business or anybody, really? Okay.
Exactly, anyone, yeah.
Councilor Comanna?
Thank you, Kundi. Um, just wondering, uh, you know, we we had about three hundred applications and two hundred already approved. Um, we know the uh amount that province is uh giving as a whole, which uh over nineteen hundred uh slots, right? So did the province tell Dray- a town of Drayton Valley that we have to cap it at at a hundred? Or is this a self-inflicted uh cap that we are enforcing ourselves?
So through to Madam Mayor to Councilor Comanna. So the province allows municipalities to customize a personalized program as they see fit. So this wasn't directly from them. This is us talking to them about how other communities are doing it. And uh, them just trying to provide some guidance to how we best manage the program, just to make sure we support the people that need it and the businesses that want to participate in it. So this is basically on us and uh something that in us running this program is something we're just sort of realizing in that uh, you know, so we started the program last year in March. So from last year in March up until now, having three hundred plus applications, when only twenty-three hypothetically, you know, get the nomination through the province, just made us realize that uh you know, a lot of people are applying, but a lot do not get it, right?
Yeah, um, if I may, may I comment? I I think uh for me, like we discussed about growing our community, right? So we're looking at M D Ps and how do we can grow our community. And if we are saying that we are not growing our community, we are closed for new residents, then that's fine, right? You know, uh, then we can say to to whole Canada or to the world, saying Drayton Valley is closed. We don't want any new residents to come here. But if we are still thinking of growing our community, then doing caps like this sends the wrong message to uh, to the world and to to the country, saying that yes, we we are growing, but we want, we don't want immigrants here, or we don't want a certain uh kind of people here, right? So um, I I I don't agree with, you know, having a cap. I understand we have to follow uh the the provincial guidelines, which is we have to do. There's no question about that. But going beyond that, I think sends the the wrong message uh to to the uh, the world, to to Canada, saying that, you know, we we are not anymore welcoming uh all residents to come to Drayton Valley and settle. When you talk about the uh, the issues that we are facing, we face those issues for everyone, not only for immigrants or the the R R S workers that's coming to Drayton Valley, right? They they are not the only one who's facing those health issue, healthcare issues, or the housing issues or anything else. It's broadly that anybody who's coming from New North Scotia, Newfoundland, Toronto, they are facing the same issues as well. So why do we just pigeonhole ourselves to, you know, saying that, okay, we have these issues, but you can't come? You, I know, the the R R S of the people can come, right? Unfortunately, as an immigrant, I cannot, you know, uh, agree to something like that. Um, I think we are still growing. Uh, we still have the have the need to uh attract more talented uh uh people to uh Drayton Valley, whether they are uh Canadians or whether they are immigrants. Uh, you know, we need that uh skill sets here. Uh, when we go to bank, when we go to healthcare, when we go uh to businesses, we still see uh um a need as well as a struggle that they are trying to fill these positions, right? So I think we need to keep it open. Uh, of course, province put a cap, that's fantastic, you know, then then we have to align with that, but I I'm not for a self-inflicted cap. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other concerns, questions? Go ahead, Councilor Sheriffs.
I I understand what uh Councilor Comanna is saying, but with the housing shortage and um I mean, we where we are right now, uh, like Kundi said, there's out of the two hundred twenty-three were approved and yet there's still shortage for rentals. And I know in other communities as well, uh, people that went through something like R R S or something similar um ended up getting jobs and realizing, okay, we can't afford to live in this place on the wage that we're making. So I know it's an issue and I think we putting a cap on on new people is a way to go probably. Also, the community has been raising some concerns about local people not being able to get a job now. So I'm all in favor for this. I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, if you want to make a motion, go ahead.
Sure. Um, so um, I'll make a motion that council approve for the proposed change to Rural Renewal Stream Program as defined in Report A I R twenty twen- uh twenty-four dash one ninety-nine.
Thank you very much for that. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? Councilor McGee?
Kundi, um, what is uh the burden right now on our administration? We know that each one of these documents takes time. Uh, so tell me about the uh, the the, if we have even an estimated cost, uh, because it's not zero, we, it's a cost for us to do, to take this on, right? So what's the burden at at administrative level?
Uh, through to Councilor McGee. Uh, I mean, so of course, with a program like this and with as many applications that we do receive, it does take a bit of time, right? So our estimated uh timeframe for endorsing someone is a month to two months only because of all the requirements before that endorsement, all the um documents that we need. And so of course, uh, there is a considerable amount of time spent on such a program like this. Um uh, but you know, so it is a free service, we don't charge, you know, an application fee for something like this. So it's more or less just on time spent, right? Uh, but of course, we're coming forward with this report. It's not so much about the burden on us, you know, administratively, it's more or less just uh an observation, you know, and one of the partners we work with uh is F C S S, for example. So in talking to F C S S and just seeing just how overwhelmed they are with newcomers coming in, it's just us just trying to then, you know, make sure that uh we can provide, or we can at least strategically provide um a way for them not to be too, not not to be too overwhelmed, making sure that they get the, you know, affordable number of people coming in. A lot of people that do come in, um, apart from just within the province, also come from outside the province. And so immigration is a very, very uh, it's a, it's a very popular program. And so for us, really, it's just about trying to manage all of that, right?
And if I, if I take on a um, a job, um, I'm I'm guessing it's at at a level of healthcare aides, um, and uh maybe Tim Hortons and W kind of work, uh, you know, that kind of uh work is is what people are looking for. But if I come in under the guise uh to work at the uh, say, the A N W, um, can I move around within that system and go to Mr. Mike's, sir? If I don't like A N W, is, am I allowed to do that?
So through to Councilor McGee, uh, it all does depend on, uh, because the way this program works is that an employer has to be willing to put in a, put in an application for you, so you can receive that nomination and endorsement. And so during that time where you are being endorsed and nominated and, you know, if everything does work out that you do get that nomination from the province, you know, you would be restricted to that employer, uh, because your application will be attached to that employer. Uh, but of course, right, there are a lot of protections for uh job seekers that I'm, might not be, you know, if they're not being treated fairly by A N W, for example, the province does have recourse, so you can get in touch with them and make sure that uh you are being treated fairly. And if you need to be moved to another employer, it is possible. But of course, you know, as I go into the process, it's just not recommended, but when those, you know, situations do arise, there is a way for them to get out of that situation if it's a bad one.
Okay. And two months ago, the province made changes to this Rural Renewal Stream. Um, will that have its own effect um and slow down the process without us self-inflicting at one hundred?
So the province did uh make changes to the R R S program. And uh, but as I spoke to earlier, businesses have been finding a loophole, right, to what the province instituted. And so it's one of those things where um you know, there is always a way to sort of get around doing certain things. And even, and so we did see a decline in at least new businesses coming in, but then we're now seeing surge in businesses, right, new applications. And so the the rate is still pretty much the same as it was before, only because, you know, there is a great opportunity for immigration, right? So, yeah, so it's pretty much still the same.
Okay. And finally, I noted this morning that the province of Quebec has put a cap on. And uh, they're they're finding that their um, their worry is that they're losing their language. They have a whole different series of issues that. They have a whole different series of issues based in Quebec, as we know. But they, they, but the province is not capped. So I'm thinking Quebec is capping. Is the province putting a cap on?
So as, as we know right now, they haven't put a cap on it. They, what they do is they just allot an amount of nominations for the per program. And so for R R S, it's one thousand nine hundred, right? Up until just for twenty twenty-four. And so with that amount of nominations that they have for the program, we, they basic work with those numbers and they look at the applications they're getting from job seekers. And they're just allowed up until those nominations are fulfilled. So as I'm aware right now, it might be a little different from Quebec in that sense. But, but we of course have seen them scaling back a bit, right? So those changes that made two months ago, they definitely have been taking a, you know, they have been looking at the program and they are being a little more skeptical of it and just scaling back to make sure they can manage.
B C was also part of that article as well, putting the cap on. Yeah. Councillor Gomana?
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's frustrating to see that we are deviating away from our diversity and inclusivity strategies. The issues that we discussed here today, it doesn't only belong to immigrants. All of these issues belongs to or affects any residents in Drain Valley. And but now we are pigeonholing these issues and saying that, oh, because immigrants are coming here, that's why, you know, these issues are happening, right? On top of that, they are coming here because the businesses in Drain Valley wants them here. There, there's a process that, as, as you know, that we are following, right? It's a process that the, the business initiates. It's only can be initiated by a business endorsing a, a immigrant to say that, you know, you are needed for my business. And after that, the immigrant and the business collectively apply to the town of Drain Valley. So to, to say that anybody can come here, that's not right. It, it's a process and the process starts here in Drain Valley. It, it's, like I said, it's frustrating to, to see that the part that, that town of Drain Valley is taking, I, I don't know where we're going, but like I said, I'm, I'm not in favor of the, the motion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So there is a motion on the table. I guess my concern is, is this enough? When we put up these proposed changes? And I think it is just because it is happening more and more. You look at, you know, it's putting pressure on our F C S S when we talk about, you know, service capacities. I, it, I worry. And the same with healthcare, right? Like how many people in the room here have a doctor and don't have a doctor? So do we, do you feel that it's enough? Or do you feel that, you know, we'll just kind of wait if more changes from the province come? And then also, what is the feedback for, from the community on like labor shortages still?
So through to the mayor. Honestly, so for us, just based on our conversations with the province and as well just, we are part of the rural North Stream community. And so we do have monthly meetings and we do share quite a bit with other communities that are part of this program. Just based on that, we just thought this was a first crack at just trying to manage it better, right? And so we'll of course be assessing how things go, you know, if these changes are approved. And, you know, if, and so it's one of those things where we do have the ability to personalize as we see fit, even from now and moving forward. So even if, you know, you know, to councillor Gomana's concerns, right? If this becomes way too restrictive and we do observe that, we can even come back to council and say, we might have gone too far ahead. So it works both ways. And yeah, so for right now, it's just, we just thought this measure made, made a little more sense. And, but of course, we'll be assessing throughout.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Then I'll ask all in favor.
I would like the motion recorded, please.
Can it still be recorded?
Yes, you are.
Yeah. Okay. Can you record the vote? So there's motion on the floor. I'll ask all in favor, all opposed. That is carried. Thank you very much, Kundi. And we'll take a seven minute break and then we'll come back, jump into our last decision items and then move to council and admin reports. Okay, we will reconvene and call our meeting back to order at, all my clocks are wrong, ten twenty-five, jump back in right to our decision items this morning. Up next is nine point five R V Sanny dump upgrade. Welcome. Good morning, Ms. Bree Haskell. This is your first council meeting. We won't go hard on you. Don't worry. We're just here to listen and you did a fantastic job, so we're going to support you in every way that we can. Don't be nervous and just have fun. No pressure at all.
That's a big ask. Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. Administration was asked by council to find options to potentially monetize the R V stations in town. We currently have two sites, four on the south side of town and then two by the Arc Park Park. The rates, oh, sorry, option A that we came up with was to fence the South Sanny Dump, and add an automated pay station with the gate arm with one entrance and one exit, and place the gate arms in both lanes at the dog park station. This would require six gate arms, three entrance and three exit. I've outlined the costs here and the total estimated installation would be one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Option B would be the pay system most commonly found in communities in Alberta and B C, which is the Santa Star system. Comes with a cap that covers the dump station that's opened by a solenoid after payment is received. I've outlined the cost for this below with the total estimated cost of sixty thousand, one hundred dollars for installation. In order to gain accurate information, whether or not this could be revenue potential, we'd first need to do a traffic count at both stations. The total for the traffic count would be almost twenty thousand a month. Or sorry, it would be for July and August would be seventeen thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. When I wrote this report, I made a different recommendation, but now after looking at it more, I think that the administrative recommendation would be that we do the traffic count first to first find out if it, is there's any monetary potential involved.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Mr. Ferris, did you want to add something?
Oh, good, good job.
Good job. You did a very good job.
Yeah. And so, yes, so the, I've just given her a hand here with the recommendation. And as we, we started to talk about it, realized that we should really do a traffic council. Council has the information about how long a payback would be on, on this capital expenditure. So with that, I, I have the following recommendation that I think Bree would like to make. And that is administration respectfully recommends that council approve up to twenty thousand dollars for a traffic count until the end of the season at both Sandy dump sites. And that administration bring back a report to council to determine the capital cost and the payback period based on that traffic.
Perfect. Thank you very much for that. Any questions this morning? Councillor Evans?
So the plan would be to have a short traffic count, just to kind of get a general idea. Yeah, I was, fifty-two thousand is a pretty good chunk of money to just decide whether we have the numbers to, to support the capital investment to put into this and, and how long that recovery might be. You're proposing twenty thousand for, we're looking at probably September, October?
I would, I, I think Bree was suggesting until the end of the season, so I'm not sure when we shut those down.
I, I'm just estimating end of October, Bree, something like that, camping season.
Fifty-two thousand would be from May long weekend to mid-October. And the, for the total camping season generally. And then for just to do the two months would, which would be the busiest months would be July and August would be the seventeen.
Oh, okay. So both proposals are for next year?
Yes.
I'm just wondering, do we have the, or would we have the ability to set up a camera there? You know, at, if we could set up a camera fairly cheaply, you know, we could throw a little bit more, a little bit of money at someone, say, once a week going through there and just checking off how many, how many vehicles we get. I just find the, the fifty-two thousand is a lot of money. That's almost a full position.
So we also did look into some, a camera system and basically it would be a trail camera type thing. Like you said, we check in on it, do just a manual count. We can buy some quality cameras for around twenty-five hundred dollars.
Now, what about our camera system, miscellaneous cameras we're putting up here and there? Is there, would we, sorry, I'm looking at you guys there. Would we have the ability to, to put one up there and record?
I think, and I'll defer to Cody and Tom on this, but I think we would have to get permission from the privacy commissioner on that. But.
So you think the policy may keep us from having a camera at a dump station? Okay, I, I. In the end, this is my opinion. I, I, I would like to see us recovering some of that revenue or some of those costs. We end up treating all that sewage. That's why it came up. I don't think it's gonna, I, I don't see it as being a big moneymaker or anything, but it would be nice to at least recover the costs that we're putting into providing that service. I think fifty-two thousand is, is a pretty big chunk of change just to determine that. So I would like to suggest maybe we look at the option of, of having a, a camera there and, and how that breaks down as, as far as cost. Like I say, at fifty-two thousand, if we can get the camera in there for five thousand or something and then, and then have somebody once a week just look through it and put the total on a spreadsheet. I, I, I wonder if we could, if we could do it for much less than that and then determine whether it's worthwhile to go ahead with the, the proposal that, that you've made. What do you think, Wally?
Well, if I, if I may, Madam Mayor, I think the, the, the issue with a camera and why Ms. Haskell has indicated perhaps a, like a field camera would be more appropriate is, is of power, right? So to put a camera there, we'll still have to run power, which would require Fordus. And I think the breakout to run the power is, is, is in there is fairly, fairly expensive. So putting up a game camera of some sort to, to do those counts would be the most cost effective solution.
And a game camera costs, we're thinking twenty-five hundred dollars, they're that much?
If we wanted a quality.
Oh, so we'd get two.
And they would be two as well.
Okay. Councillor Sheriffs?
So I read through both options and option B seems to be more common, like commonly used in Alberta and B C. And I'm just wondering why administration is suggesting option A as opposed to option B? Do we really need a whole fence and arms and all of that?
Thank you for your question. The communities that are using it, I reached out to and they have had some issues with it. This being the only set, system I could find available for this type of thing was the Santa Star system. They have quite a few issues with it in terms of vandalism. People just lock them open, so they, people aren't paying. And the call out costs have been fairly high for a lot of these communities. And the people that I spoke to did say if they had the option to just do something like the parking gate, they would prefer that.
So would it be debit or credit only or is it cash as well? Is that what's causing the vandalism?
The vandalism was with the caps and the, so the way that the Santa Star works is that over the dump site, there would be a lid or a cap on it and then you would pay and you could step on the cap and it would pop up. And people would just break it off fairly regular from what I hear. Both options do have a coin system, but then again, that was where, where a lot of the vandalism was coming from with break-ins and the coin machine jamming up.
I was going to suggest that maybe just go strictly with debit or credit only, no cash on premises kind of sign. And that would maybe solve some other problems, right?
Yes, these options here are, are just strictly tap.
So what about, because I do agree with your comments, Rick, definitely that, you know, we're not in it to make, you know, a huge revenue, but I think that, you know, it's definitely puts a strain on our system. And I'm just throwing this out there, but what about if we got some feedback from the community? And we said, you know, this is what we're thinking. Explain the reasons that it puts a strain on our, our sanitation and that it's an ongoing cost. And rather than increasing costs, how would the community feel if, you know, all R V owners paid a fee of fifty dollars a year and it went into a reserve? And they could see this reserve that was helping do that and it's a simple solution or something. You got five hundred R V owners and twenty-five thousand dollars a year or something. But explain, do the comms piece and say, we're not trying to tax you, we're not trying to increase fees. This option was presented, these options were presented, so these types of costs would come to budget. And then there'd be an ongoing cost. And then there could be potentially down the road, you know, these are things that we factor in when we talk about tax increases because they're services. Instead of doing that, you know, we were thinking a way around that. What about everyone did the voluntold thing and you said, you know what, I've got an R V and I'd, I'd be paying if I'm going anywhere. So here's my fifty bucks for the year. It's not a lot.
So I understand what you're saying. One thing, ourselves, we quite often use the Sanny Dump Station because we camp a lot. There's a lot of people that go from Big Horn Dam, Red Zoo area, that go past Drain Valley. All you have to do is look up dump stations and there will be people. I mean, there's people that don't live in our community that use them. So I think the argument would be, why am I paying? People from out of town don't have to pay. I think that might be a little bit of a concern.
Councillor Evans?
Yeah, I, 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 I mean, it is a, it, it, it would be nice to be able to do that. Nice and clean and we don't have a bunch of money tied up in the, in the infrastructure to make it work. I, I, I would just suggest this, that we, we, we get the numbers first. Let administration set up the camera, collect, collect the numbers for maybe the rest of the year or if that's tough to do, you know, at the beginning of next year. And then we'll actually have some, some numbers to go off it. And we can, we can then figure out, do, do we have a, do we have a, we, we don't have a flow meter on any of those. We, we don't know volumes, say. At, at least then we'd have an approximation of the volumes and what exactly it is or, or a close estimation of what exactly it is costing us to treat this, this sewage. And then if we, i, i, if we feel that it's a, it's a large enough demand on our system that, that we should be trying to recover, recover it, then we know what kind of numbers we're dealing with and we'll have a better idea. Then we know what kind of numbers we're dealing with and we'll have a better idea of what might, what might work to, to, to cover those costs. But I, I, I think the first step is trying to get some, some hard numbers of, of exactly how many people are used in our system and contributing. What they're contributing in volumes.
I'll just go to Counselor Kamana first.
Thank you. No, I, I agree. Without knowing the volumes, it's hard to figure out what kind of revenues we are looking at and the investment side of things. Do we have any ballpark idea, you know, is it, we are looking at hundreds or thousands or how many times we've been, been used at all?
We, we don't know at this time.
No, no. And the, I guess the, the other piece is twenty thousand. Believe, Wally, you mentioned that for, for the count. Is it just for the count or what else would that entail?
That's to rent the, the accounting equipment.
Counting equipment?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Wow.
Counselor Sheriff?
So I was thinking, with option B, there seems to be a lot of vandalism. If we were, there would be a power to decide if we were to put cameras with some sign, kind of signage that this is. Under video surveillance, any vandalism, you know, will be recorded and you'll be fined up to five thousand dollars or whatever number. For any damage to this property. That might maybe some, because I mean, people are driving through, right, with their license plates, trailers and all that stuff.
Thank you for the question, Counselor. One of the other issues that came with the Santa Star system is that the. The company that we have to set up with to get the transactions doesn't have a very good reputation. And the other communities had said also that there's no customer support from them. They have regular issues. They can't get a hold of anybody when it's down, which is a separate company than the Santa Star system. But we, we would be required to use that company to use the system in general.
Counselor Evans?
So what was the cost if we use a couple of trail cams and just switch out the. The data sticks or the, you know, whatever they are in the, in the camps every week and, and do a manual count? Did you? Have any kind of idea of that? Few hundred bucks a piece?
If, if we purchased the cameras, it would be around twenty-five hundred for the cameras. And then it would need a sixty dollar a month cellphone chip.
Oh, so they would, they would send you the, the data from the, from the cameras?
It would be accessible through the account set up with the cameras.
So we would have access to it. It's just the fee we have to pay for cellular.
Okay, yeah. I, I'm just, sorry, I. When I was with the county and we had issues with break-ins at our transfer stations. We, we ended up just buying a four hundred dollar, a few four hundred dollar trail cams with the. Oh, it's not a data stick, but the card anyway. And once a week we'd roll through there, pop the card out, pop a new one in and then, and then do our observations, if you will. So I don't know if that's, if that's a doable option. I, 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 I know we're tight on, on. Available manpower, if you will. But yeah, something to consider. But I guess in the end, we, we need to get the numbers somehow.
Do you want to make a motion for up to twenty-five hundred dollars plus data usage charges? To purchase trail cams to get.
Okay.
To collect the data count or to collect the.
Should we?
Traffic counts?
Yeah, should we put a, a, a cap at like, so twenty-five hundred will get us the cameras and the, and the data link to download it? Or do you think you need a little bit more than that? Do you want to cap it at four thousand or something to set up a system to, to count it next summer?
That's a tough question. I, I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that we, we set up the trail cams. For whatever, whatever amount it may be. If it's twenty-five hundred dollars, then that's okay. We set them up. Run them until the end of the year and then we can extrapolate those numbers. So that for the budget this year, we can, we can have a, a, a better discussion. So with that, the discussion could be twofold at budget time. One is, you know, do we want to invest in a traffic counter system? Do you want to rent the traffic counter for the, for the prime months? Or do you want to move ahead with, with investing into one of these systems based on the numbers that you have? So for twenty-five hundred dollars, I mean, we don't, we don't need a funding source for that. We can fund that out of our CIO contingency fund. And get those cameras installed, do traffic counts to the end of the year. That's kind of what I would suggest. Shelley shaking her head? Yeah.
Okay, I, I, I think that would be my suggestion. And at least then we, we start to get a handle on exactly what we're dealing with. How many people? I, I think we'll be, the, the numbers will drop off a little bit later on in the year like this. But you, you know, when you, when you come back, then we can look at how successful it was and then make the decision maybe that we want to. Run the cameras all through next season and just get a, a, a very accurate number and then make the decision. It's a, you know, it's a, it's a significant amount of money, I think. So if we can, if we can get away reasonably cheap and get all the information we need, I'm all for that.
Okay, could you make a motion?
I was gonna say, do you need a motion then for, for that or you're, you can, you're just funding it?
We, well, we do need a motion on this because it is a decision item, but if you want, I can, I can craft that up or you can.
I can try and bumble through it here if you like. You can let me know if I'm going off the rails. I'll, I'll make the motion that, that administration. Sets up. Cameras at the, at the dump station. To, to do a traffic count and. Get more information to apply to possibly installing a. Pay-for-use dumping station. Is that okay? It's kind of roundabout there. Sorry, a little worried, but I think it'll do.
We'll, we'll clean that up, but the intent is there and give it a double check before we produce the minutes in the meeting.
Perfect. Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? My only comment is, is if we can, yeah, try to get. I don't want to say cheapest cameras as possible, but more affordable cameras, just so we can get the data that we need for the end of the year. And are we feeling confident that we could get them and get them set up prior to the long weekend in September? And yeah, okay, just because that might give us a good number too, right? If we can get them up in the next week or whatever as well. I think we could probably make that happen. Wonderful. Okay. Counselor McGee? Comment?
Just one, one last comment. I, once again, by the same citizen is wondering if we can provide water to the art park, the dogs. Rather than have them to walk around and have them drink out of the stream there. I, I don't know how difficult that is, but. And I don't have an answer for it. I just, the citizen is.
Okay, we'll talk about that in, after I do the motion. We'll talk about that in the council initiated. Okay, go ahead, Shelley.
I feel really tall.
I know, right? I thought we were moving that.
Thanks for the question. So we used to have just faucets out around the RV park. And what was happening is people were turning them on and then smashing off the valves. So we had no way to shut them off. So we ended up having to cap those ones because every day we were going out there and there was water everywhere. So it's a lot to do with vandalism at this point. I mean, they could still get it from Art Bar Park, not right now because we have a water break. But they can still get it from there if they need to.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to add trail cameras to our two sandy dump locations. In order to perform traffic counts for our upcoming budget in 2024. I'll now ask all in favor. That is carried. Perfect. Thank you very much. And you did a fantastic job. So thank you for your very first report to council. Wasn't that tough, right? We weren't that hard on you. Okay. Oh yeah, right? So that wraps up our decision items and for council-initiated items, roundtable discussions. We had a conversation in regards to water being provided at the Bark Park. And it sounds like we had vandalism issues in the past. So no. Bring your own little water bottle and dish when you bring your pets for a little run down there. Does council have any other roundtable items they'd like to discuss here? Just trying to think if we have anything. Upcoming that's happening in the next bat, or I guess we're gonna talk about that in a little bit. Actually, maybe what, so we do have two information items here, fifteen point one and fifteen point two. There could be a decision coming out of them or are we just wanting to accept them as information? I'm asking council. Okay, yeah? Otherwise, rather than just receiving misinformation, should we have a bit of a discussion, Mr. Ferris?
That's entirely up to you, Madam Mayor. We, I did respond to one of the requests. Because it came through via email with respect to the White Bull. And so if council wishes to debate, discuss and possibly donate to these fundraisers, that is entirely your decision.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for that. So we did receive two requests in regards to school supplies and correspondence. That's happening over the next weekends, week or so. The first one was tools for schools correspondence. This came from the Living Spirit United Church. I know that in the past we've given to both of these organizations or fundraisers for school supplies. So the ask this year is that we would still be donating either cash or school supplies. And then the second one is coming from Sam, the owner of White Bull. He's running the back-to-school backpack giveaway again that's held next Wednesday at the McKenzie Conference Center. And he's asking for other backpacks or supplies for this event as well. So what is council thinking and how are they feeling about supporting these or not supporting these? Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. I, I think we've supported them before, especially one of them before. So I think if we can make it work, we should look at supporting both of them.
We did it, yeah, for last. Do we know Alvera is not here? Do we know how much we gave last year? I know that we gave to both. Does anyone recall?
Don't have that information.
Yeah, we did.
We can, we can look that up and, and email it out to council, but I don't have that right now.
Okay, thank you. Like, do you want to, or if you're suggesting that, Counselor Kamana, do you want to say? I don't know, two hundred dollars, two hundred fifty dollars per letter or five hundred dollars? I'm not sure. Do you want to put a value on that?
Sure, two fifty sounds good.
Okay, two hundred fifty. You're suggesting to send for each to buy some.
Is it enough? I don't know. Counselor McGee, what do you think? Is two fifty enough?
You recall that we had people from administration driving into Edmonton, getting pencils and crayons and things like that. It went south on us, I thought. And we could have been up in the neighborhood of two or three thousand dollars on those road trips. And what happens is that on and over subscribe, which is generally what happens. Right at the last two days, somebody's burning around saying, we have seven hundred people and we only have five hundred backpacks. So can you get a couple hundred more, please? It's a bit of an interesting problem that we're faced with and two hundred and fifty dollars isn't touching anything in my mind. But we're expecting the community to get behind the White Bull and Sam and, and they do. And thunder comes in and there's lots of packs, but the responsibility for us is, I don't know why it falls in the sense. But it does the last two days.
Two years.
Which is next week. So if, if you're ready to make a motion on, on, on an amount, I guess, let's try that. I have no idea. I just think we get caught, that's all, and blamed.
And I believe that thunder is not helping this year or can't help this year. Mr. Ferris?
Well, just to address Counselor McGee's concerns. In my experience, most municipalities have policy to, to deal with situations for fundraisers. For, and charity events. So that policy usually resides in, in community services with respect to. Hey, we're gonna run a charity event or fundraiser for Counselor McGee. And we'd like to use that, your, your facility for free. So most municipalities have policies that will say no. We, you know, if you were fundraising for a charity event, then, then you need to pay for, for the room rental. And other charities like United Way, some municipalities will run large campaigns to, to do that, but they limit it. So the danger, the danger that council faces here is that if you start funding some of these requests, where does that end? Right? You can, you can debate and talk about each one if you wish, or you can direct administration to develop a, a policy and bring that back for council's consideration. You know, it would be, it would be the same policy that is out there for many municipalities. But that's usually how those things are handled and most municipalities would say, well, this is a great opportunity. They would market, perhaps market or communicate the, you know, the, the fundraiser out there. But they, they don't pass out tax dollars for, for those things. I say that, now there's, I'm sure I can be proven wrong on that. There's, some municipalities surely do. But most of them have policy around what I just said.
So I, I expect we have a policy then?
No.
Follow the policy.
I don't believe, I don't believe we have a, a policy in place, Counselor McGee.
So I think typically when we, we do have like. Organizations or groups come, a lot of times we'll encourage them to come through the, the grant funding. And I'm just trying to think if we've supported any fundraising this year. Anybody can think of anything? That we did? Yeah, so I mean, very good point, Mr. Ferris. Thank you, right? It's that if we do give, I understand, Counselor Kamana, put that out there for two fifty. So if we give here, are we ready to give two hundred and fifty or five hundred to every group that comes forward, right? To ask, because that's. Where do we draw the line? Counselor Evans?
Should we group these requests into the, put them through the same process as the, as the quarterly grant?
I don't know if it would meet the criteria.
Maybe, maybe worth consideration. Do we, do we supply? Our facility to, to Sam with the White Bull when he does this or does he get that facility at no cost?
There, well, he, he hasn't requested the use of a facility, I don't believe.
Oh.
I'm aware of. If he has a. Sorry?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that was just my question. Do we, you know, give him in-kind support through, through the use of the facility? But he, he, he rents it just like anybody else would. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to determine whether that's a, that's a contribution that we might give with, with no rental. Okay, fair enough.
Okay, so I'm not sure if you want to make a motion or if we want to discuss it further or this just accept these as information. Mr. Ferris has stated that you responded to one, not both, right? Just the one?
I responded to, to Sam because he kind of addressed it to, to, to council and myself as well. The other one came in just as a generic letter to council. So I responded to Sam and I went over and made a donation.
Yeah, and we all have the opportunity to give personally too, right?
You certainly do.
Yeah. Heather?
And so we would have, there must have been a report on that requesting that because administration doesn't have the authority to, to give out those facilities for free. So if that's a request from either one of these groups, then administration would have to bring a report forward saying, hey, we're going to donate, we would, we would recommend the council to donate the room.
Yeah, we would have a record of the motion. Yeah, and I don't remember there being a motion. Okay, so that's something to consider as well. Okay, so how's everyone feeling? Are we wanting to, are you wanting to make a motion, Counselor Kamana? Or it was just for conversation and accept these as information?
I'm not sure where we are at, so I don't know to make a motion.
For myself, you're going to make a motion? Go ahead, make a motion.
I'll recommend that we, for this year, until we've adjusted our, our policies, that we, we supply our facility to Sam and the White Bull, and that will be our, our contribution. And we give $250 to the other initiative. And moving forward, we'll come up with a policy or look at whether we can include these types of contributions in our quarterly grant applications. How do you like that?
Yeah, that's good, Kate. You've got a motion. I was just trying to think of last year. I kind of do remember there was something brought forward with, no, 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 with McKenzie Conference Center. Like, I'm just thinking of Sam bringing something forward. Sure, any comment, question, debate on the motion? Counselor Kamana?
How much is the facility rental cost? Is it $750? It's close to that. Would you? Yeah. To take a friendly amendment for the amount of the rental fee, the same amount to the other group as well?
Sorry, you're suggesting $750 for the?
Six, six.
$650?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would be okay with that as long as we clean it up for next year and we know exactly where we're at, right? I don't know, is? Okay, yeah, I'll take the friendly amendment.
Thank you.
So.
Increasing it to 660? No.
So Counsel Evans' suggestion is that because we give the facility free for one entity, we would give 250 for the other entity. And my friendly amendment was that can we increase that to 660, which to even out the facility rental for one entity?
Covers the cost of the rental fee at McKenzie Conference Center, 660.
So we'd be approving the White Bull, get the facility for free, which is a $650 value, and then the other group we give 650 directly to.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Did you find a motion from last year? I know we had conversation and we did not support because council did not support last year for a number of reasons. For the backpack last year at all. Yeah, but I don't, we don't think we did.
We didn't give them the facility for free last year.
I remember there was council, some council was a little bit upset because they were saying that the people were accessing the backpacks. They felt that.
Well, there's.
Remember, there was some controversy over that?
There's no doubt that, I mean, it's for people who need the assistance, and there's lots of people who don't need the assistance that just come get free backpacks. There's no doubt about that.
I guess my only concern is if we didn't do it last year, we're doing it this year, and then we're going to take it away next year. There's no consistency. It's, we're all over the place, and it opens up the door again for everyone who wants to come forward, so be prepared to give. We don't typically give a lot of in-kind from the McKenzie Conference Center either, right? So I guess you have to answer why this particular, these two particular asks, right? We do have a lot of asks. I think that they're both great initiatives, and they're well-needed. I just don't know if I can support it, right? Just because going forward, then we're setting that precedence to continue doing this. And, yeah. Any other comments? Counselor McGee?
Well, well-needed is a, is it well-needed for what? I know there are people that need it, and if you go to the, to the church groups, what they do is they gather up the backpacks, they give them to the schools, and the schools makes a decision on whether Jim or Johnny actually needs the backpack, which I think is tremendous, rather than the whirlwind, throw out all the backpacks, and we got another winner, right? I just, it just, and it continually happens. We don't seem to have understanding of the motion. We don't seem to have an understanding of what we did last year. What we do know that if, if everybody comes to us for the McKenzie Conference Center for a charity, quite frankly, I'm, I'm for that. Facility, we know it takes administrative time, but if that's the policy, if it's a certain charity, then where we go? But we, to the point that was made by Counselor Evans, that let's make sure it's cleaned up for next year, not having the same discussion, because we had it last year, and I don't know what we did.
Mr. Ferris?
Well, just to complicate things further, and I'm sorry, but it is a shared facility with the county. So if we're going to grant this room rental to whatever group it may be, we also need the county's approval or to pay that difference.
Lots to think about before we vote. Like I said, I think these are both great initiatives to support the community. I will not be voting in favor for a number of reasons for this, because it is, as we say, taxpayers' dollars. It's up to the county for cost sharing. And if we're going to be supporting this, then we need to be supporting everything. With that being said, now I'm going to have to make a personal donation to support this. But yeah, it's always difficult when we have these types of asks, right? Because it's where do you, where do you stop? And then the county sometimes, you know, doesn't appreciate when we don't bring them on board with things as well. I don't know if anyone else has comments, question? Counselor Kamana?
So if that's a concern, can we, give it to the motion saying if council is, sorry, if the county is okay with that, then we would, we would do that? Or should we just say half of it, 660 is 330, and you know, just kept, kept it there? Then we know that, you know, we can cover it?
Yeah, our, our direct cost then would be half of the cost of the facilities. So I don't know if I can keep messing around with this motion and we, and we drop it down to 330 for each. One is direct contribution and one is the use and kind of the facility. Can I, can I change that?
Hasn't, it hasn't been voted on, so you do have a friendly amendment on the table, and if you want to make a.
Can I withdraw it and do a new one?
You can do a friendly amendment to a friendly amendment. Yes, you can.
Okay, I'll do a friendly.
If you can make a friendly amendment on a friendly amendment, I think we have to vote on the friendly amendment.
Okay.
Or withdraw the vote.
Withdraw the vote? Withdraw the?
Withdraw the motion.
Can I withdraw the motion? And redo it?
I don't know if you can withdraw the motion after it's been amended. Okay, so let's vote on the amended friendly motion that's on the floor.
Okay, and is that the 330?
No, that's the six. Vote, and then if you want to make another motion, make another motion.
Okay.
Okay? All in favor for the 660? All opposed? Okay, that's defeated. Okay? Now, if you'd like to make another motion, if you'd like to make a motion.
In, in the end, I, I think this is reasonable for this year, but I, I agree that I'd really like to have some structure around this so we can fall back on a policy when we get these requests. I do think that this is worthwhile. I agree with you, Tom, though, as well. I, I think it's more effective when the needs are assessed at the beginning of the class, the beginning of the school year, rather than a whole big push out of anybody who shows up gets one. But in my mind, for this year, I, I, I think they're both worthwhile, and I think if we support one, we need to support the other. So I'll throw this motion out there, and it can always be voted down. I'll make the motion that we support both organizations, one with half of the cost of our facilities at $330, the other with a direct, direct funding of $330.
Okay, perfect. There's a motion on the floor. Comment, question, debate on the motion? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried.
Mayor, if I could get a direction from council to direct administration to develop a policy for this charity fundraising events around facility donations and, so in-kind contributions and cash donations for fundraising charity, then staff can take that away and develop that policy.
So my only question would be, when we have events that are happening and people ask to sponsor through tables, and we go for a charity, right? Would that be included?
We can include that.
Okay. Perfect.
Please, yeah. So you can just, you can keep it very simple and just direct staff to develop a policy for fundraising and charity events.
Okay, I'll make the motion that administration develop a policy to deal with fundraising requests.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Any comment, question, debate on the motion? All in favor? That is carried. Okay, so those got moved, excuse me, out of our information items, so they'll, they're no longer be there. And we'll jump into department reports. First up, we have Ms. Pollard for Community and Recreation Services Department, Council Report 11.1.
Morning, or?
Good morning.
Mid-morning. Ah, the Community Department Report. So early childhood development, all September available spots are filled except for one Thursday, Friday. Some of the family has started through July and August, which helps alleviate a big portion of transitions in the first few weeks of September. ECDC had 36 kids go to the Bear Paw Ranch for the summer wind-up. This was made again through the Purdy's Chocolate fundraiser, fundraiser, and we'll be doing this again in the fall, so be sure to watch out for the treats. It's from Bernice. For the, for us, CTC, we've had a lot of weddings this month. Everybody's happy and getting married and taking care of all the, taking advantage of all the good weather. Ice is in, omni-tu is in as of today. We had a little bit of a struggle. We had the butterfly valve leak, and our dehumidifier decided that it shouldn't work when it's the most humid. So that was also a struggle, but we got through it. Jingle ball is on its way. We've advertised, it is selling out fast, so we expect it'll probably be sold out in the next couple of weeks as per usual, so we're excited about that. And we advertised, we bought a board for our warehouse, they actually gave us $5,000 for a donation towards our new clock, which is up and running beautifully, so that's also good. New speakers are on their way. They're not here yet. They were kind of held up somewhere in another country, I don't know, but they'll be here probably this week, so I'm thankful for that. Swimming lessons and pool camps are, continue to fill up. The junior lifeguard raised $11,000 for the athletes and coaches going to Worlds. It's pretty cool. And, and they have begun expensing the funds from the Copeland donation to the facility, items like lobby furniture, cabinets, window coverings, and many other operational support improvements, and being sorted out, ordered and installed. Community Services, members of the ESS team were deployed to Hinton to provide support to the team there at the Incident Command Center for the Jasper Fire. Alberta, September 1st is Alberta Day, and we have some activities planned, thanks to the funding from the government of Alberta. We are working alongside the county to offer free swim, free skate, and all sponsored by the county and the town. Free family swim and a skate also on the first, sponsored by the town. The Drayton Valley Historical Society will also be offering free tours from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on the, at the Drayton Valley Museum, September 1st, following opening, opening dignitary speeches to commemorate the events. Ooh, that's a mouthful. The Drayton Valley Library will also be facilitating a book walkthrough event that focused events on the history of Drayton Valley.
Perfect. Thank you very much for your report. Any questions? Counselor McGee?
Just one quick one. Ricochet Quadic Center, we know that Ricochet is what, but if we can, if we, do we have to recomplete a five-year agreement with the new owners of Ricochet, or is that just sort of, just the way it is?
I don't think the name is changing.
I don't think it's changing.
Well, the funding agreement is with Ricochet. Ricochet is still, is still there as far as, as far as we know.
We don't have to have new owner signatures or anything like that? We just carry on and tell, tell something around?
I don't believe so. I think there's clause in there around assignment. So we'll, maybe we'll review that, though. It's a good point.
Okay, Counselor Kamana?
Thank you. I'm not sure if you're right, President, to ask a question about the Splash Park. Just wondering about the hours of operation for that. Have we changed the hours of operations, or is it the longer hours for the summer still?
Um, I don't know. Sorry, it's.
I believe we dealt with that already. I thought there was some email correspondence on that last week.
I thought it was last week, yeah.
And forward that back to you. There had, this question came up, I believe, last week or within the last week or so, and I think Hans, Hans answered it by email, but I'll, I'll have to dig that up and I can forward that, forward that to you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry, I haven't seen that email, so thank you for that.
I, I think the request by Counselor Kamana last week was to increase the hours, and the email coming back said, we're just going to post the hours, which are this to this. And so whether or not that the answer to, because I think that's your request, is to increase the hours of the Splash Park. Is that not correct, Counselor Kamana?
That is. The reason. The reason that I was bringing that to attention is that there, when I was there for a few times, residents who were there, we were trying to use the Splash Park and they couldn't because I think the, the time that was.
Oh, okay.
Is, is, and, and that was a hot summer day.
Oh, yeah.
I was just wondering, you know, what, first of all, what are the posted hours? And then is there an opportunity for us to increase just for, for, for the time being?
So to increase the hours will increase our operational costs. So, so that would be something that we would have to consider during budget time. We can have a look at that, but with respect to the specific hours of operation, Shelley, I don't know if you can.
Yeah, the current hours of operation, we did increase longer in the evenings from ten to eight, I believe. So, but morning operations is a little bit more tricky because we have to do a bunch of testing and cleanup and things like that. So it takes us a little bit of time to get it opened in the, in the mornings. But it was extended, I, I'm sure, till eight P M. I'll confirm with Kelsey to, to verify, but.
Thank you for that, Shelley. Yes, please confirm because it was like around five thirty-six o'clock that wasn't working, so.
Potentially we had a failure that shut it down, so just have them, them call and, and we'll, we'll address it.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you very much for your report. Next up, we have Ms. Shelley Terry from Municipal Services for her department report this morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Members of Council. So for utilities, we've started our annual pressure-reducing valve inspections. We completed our annual clean-out of our lift stations. Operators repaired aeration diffusers on our wastewater lagoons. Maintenance holes, manholes. Inspections have been completed along the south trunk line. This helps us accurately get pricing for potential lining in the future. Blower belts have been changed out in all of our blowers at the wastewater treatment facility. Two C Cs have been replaced in the distribution network. The sanitary dump station by the Arc Bar Park is out of service due to water break under the cement. It's just the water that's out of service. We did open up the dumping station. They just don't have access to water just at this time. Monitoring well sampling is in progress for the wastewater treatment facility. And we have rehired a back truck operator. And it was an internal hire, so means our success rate will be higher on this one. Parks, parks have been keeping up with their daily maintenance of our flower beds and baskets. Thanks to the generous donation from Wilderness Gardens, crews have been able to add to our already beautiful planters, planters beds, as well as the Clean Energy Technology Center, adding more beauty to our continuous wetting season. Mower operations and weed whacking operations have been in full swing, keeping up with every, the ever-growing grass and weeds. This was built by our new lead hand, just so you know. Crews have been working on cleaning, upgrading on Fiftieth Street around our boulevards and trees. Garbage pickup maintenance has increased as to keep up with the events and increase in usage of our park spaces. Crews have been working with Public Works on cemetery landscaping. Summer, summer work is now starting to come to an end, so we are starting to say goodbye to some of our seasonals. Also, Parks has been helping with painting curb lines along Fiftieth and Fiftieth. So they've been trained up, so we can keep that going with seasonals. Public Works, we've now started our last ditch in large green space mowing with our big tractors. This will be the final rotation for cutting. Maintenance street sweeping is still being conducted around town. This includes doing additional street sweeping for the street party event, as well as other events around our community. Public Works assisted the Omniplex with cleaning out the heater trench for the brine circulation, which gets filled during, oh no, I feel like that happened a long time ago. Sorry, two monument installs occurred, a- as well as some cremation at our cemetery. Crews have been assisting in other landscaping jobs throughout the community. This includes landscaping for any internal water repairs that we've conducted. Crews have been working on minor pothole repairs in Brazu Business Park, as well as some residential cul-de-sacs. Back alley work is being, is ongoing. A few locations required additional gravel and grading. Line painting of the Omniplex parking lot was completed by internal staff. And we did get quotes and external quotes was around ten thousand dollars to redo the, the parking stalls. So we decided we have our own sprayer, we'll do it internally. M M A paint for the three intersections within, within town has still not been completed. The manufacturing plant that supplies the paint is having continuous breakdowns, and we can't get the paint required to do the work. So I'm working with the contractors right now to get this rectified as quickly as possible. Landfill and engineering, regular landfill operation is ongoing. Monitoring the active cell, especially cell four E, to make sure that the end-of-day cover is completed or the grizzly plates are in place. Tetra Tech will send out us the airspace analysis on August twenty sixth. We've got the first and we're reviewing it right now. Regular monitoring leachate measuring levels according to A E P approval. And every week, weather pending, a pump out of our leachate is conducted. Getting a quote from a contractor for our geo liner, geo textile hauling away. So we, we accept it. It's about fifteen hundred dollars per geo liner. And this is what they line ponds with. But once we have it, we can't put it into our cell because it ends up blocking off our leachate monitoring piping. So we, we have to either shred it really fine and then put it in our cells, or we get a company to come in and haul it away. So we're looking at getting some quotes on what that looks like. There's been smooth operations for town garbage pickup, even with the fifty F, which is actually quite surprising that we're still being able to maintain our collections. Jasper Wildfire Waste has still not been brought to our facility. We have placed a cap of five thousand tones, tones of waste space available. Our other larger facilities have placed higher amounts of waste accepted after doing some research. W S P has scheduled a kickoff meeting for the snow storage dump design and construction. Sidewalk replacement is still ongoing. Trail upgrades will start in September. Bioswale preparation, tree planting this week on Forty-third Street and excavation of subgrade phase one to Forty-sixth Street has begun. That's actually been completed. Now they're getting closer to that forty-third, and the bioswales are now done, both in front and behind San Anthony School. Border Pating was supposed to start mobilizing Thursday and Friday of last week, but unfortunately, weather prevented them from starting. So they mobilized yesterday or today, sorry, they're mobilizing today to start the subgrade. And admini- administration is still working with contractors and consultants on getting updated prices for fifty F for work in twenty twenty-five. We've also made sure to reach out to both school Star Catholic and Wild Rose about buffing so that they know that there could be some potential impacts to their normal routes so they can prepare for the closure on Fiftieth. And I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you very much for your report. Any questions?
We felt a, a little bit of pressure one morning. Did we have something that would, um, pressure, just for a short time, maybe an hour? Did we, would we see that or is it Sheila's imagination?
Uh, what location?
By Dairy Queen.
By Dairy Queen.
So we didn't have a break or anything like that? Okay, fair enough.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you very much for your report. Next up is council reports. Councilor Kamana, you are up first.
Thank you. On the eighth, I had the opportunity to go to the Skate Park Jam with some fellow councillors being there as well. It was very well organized for this year, as always. It was a good turnout and this year, weather was pretty good. Last year was very windy, but it was a good day to have a Skate Park Jam. On the fifteenth, attended the discussion about the unhoused. We had R C M P and other groups there as well. On the fourteenth, I had a unique opportunity to go to Leduke, actually, with our previous M L A Mark Smith and, and sit down with a doctor who's immigrated from Ghana and looking to, I guess, find a location to practice. So I tried to, of course, celebrate really to, to him and his family as well and, you know, talk about what we have to offer. There's some process that he need to go through, as well as some asked from P P R R C, which probably will come back to the town of Great Valley and, and county in, in due course. But it was a great, great discussion that we had with the doctor and, and the family. So they have two kids and, and hopefully they will, when, when they go through the process, they will select Great Valley as their, their location. On the fifteenth, a street party, once again, very well organized, very good turnout. Had, had fun there. Myself and the family was there as well, so kudos to D V C for organizing a fantastic street party again. Twentieth, yesterday, just had a, another discussion about E C M Lab and Palate Care Unit upgrades with Health Foundation. I think we've, we've figured out most of the kinks that we had and, and hopefully we can go ahead with, at least the E C M Lab, Palate Care Unit, still kind of in a limbo. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Deputy Mayor Evans?
Okay, it won't take me long. On the eighth, quick agenda setting meeting, and then I wasn't able to attend the Skate Park Jam. I ended up working for a couple of days out of town. Whoops. On the fourteenth, of course, attended the G and P meeting. Fifteenth, again, agenda setting and some discussion about our meeting with the, with the premier. And then on the sixteenth, of course, we had a couple of meetings there, one with the premier and one with Mark and some other representatives of interesting business. And then the street party. Lastly, that is actually it for me. Sorry.
All right, thank you very much for your report. Councilor Sheriffs?
So I'm not going to echo some of the other councillors events. We all attended. The only other one that I, I was, I had a Zoom meeting with was Central Airship Society and the, the planning for sometime in May of twenty twenty-five for the big anniversary party. We're trying to get connections and businesses involved and figure out who to invite to it and such. Other than that, nothing new.
Thank you for your report, Councilor McGee.
Madam Mayor, I think from my point of view, we, we only a couple of things. We met with Jeff McKay with Weyerhauser and the ongoing discussion about the pathway that we've been discussing. We're hoping to get some, some more information and report back to council in the next little while. The Skate Park, Skate Jam was good. Councilor Kamana is right. It was, it's good to see the kids out there using it and, and they had a special day. So it was good and it was well organized, as you said. The lastly is the, the street party. It started the poor rain at about eight thirty and that was enough for an old guy to head home. But the younger group said, no, 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 we're still in. And the, apparently what I've heard is that the rain subsided and they played the second band and they had a wonderful turnout. So that's the good news on the street party. I'm really happy to hear that because I thought it might have stopped right then, but it didn't. So, and lastly, the premier. Probably more to hear from that. We, a lot of things came out of that and ongoing sort of positions for us to take with different ministers. And, and so, and M L A. So it was good to have the premier in town. Thanks.
Thank you for your report. For myself, the Weyerhauser meeting again to discuss the trail expansion at Ivantow all the way to C T C. Hopefully, we can see some of that hit the ground and get started this year, as well as I attended the Skate Park Jam. Another fantastic year, lots of volunteers and that make that happen and some special skaters, which is fantastic. Continue meetings for the gala planning, the Mayor's Gala coming up in September, as well as I did a interview with a contractor through the University of Alberta in regards to our zero fee tuition initiative and our education portfolio. We had a homeless and unhoused meeting in ways that we're going to address this ongoing issue in our community. A bit of a strategic session. I attended and got to see, just for a few minutes, the kids' fire camp wrap-up. So I think it was a successful three days. Thank you to all the firefighters that, I guess, knocked the socks off of these kids for three days and filled them full of excitement and hope. And hopefully they'll want to become, a few of them will want to become some firefighters. I know when I went there, they were super excited and it looked like they had a fantastic time. So thank you for making that happen for the kids in our community, as well as wrapping last week up with the premier visit and just kind of walking, welcoming her into our community again, talking about some of the pressing issues that we're faced with, whether that's the lack of infrastructure funding or healthcare issues and some of the initiatives that we're working on, whether it's economic development or our education center at the C T C. So it was a good meeting and then finished off with the street party, a fantastic turnout. And it's great to hear that the rain did not keep everyone away, that they came back out and celebrated and, celebrated into the wee hour. So thank you to everyone that made that happen. And that is it for my report. Is there a member of council that'd like to accept both department reports and council reports as information? Councilor McGee, thank you very much for that. And we have no information items as we discussed those a few minutes earlier. Is there a member of council that'd like to make a motion to move us enclosed? Councilor Kamana, thank you. All in favor? That is carried. And we are enclosed. We're off, Nathan?